Good evening, gentlemen, you have the, uh, great. Welcome to a meeting of the Board of School Directors, 1014th meeting, November 21st, 2013. Welcome. We have a news update for you to watch, and then we're gonna start the meeting.
Hello and welcome to this North Penn News Update. I'm Melissa Cubitt. National anti-bullying activist John Halligan visited Pembroke Middle School to deliver his powerful message. In his three presentations, Halligan covered the lessons learned too late about bullying, cyberbullying, and teen depression after his son Ryan committed suicide in 2003 at the age of 13 after being bullied by classmates in school and online. First graders at Nash Elementary School kicked off the year-long celebration of reading with the annual Reading is Fundamental Day. The students spent the morning participating in crafts, games, and reading books all themed around literacy and reading. The North Penn High School Theater Department presents our town, Thornton Wilder's homage to small-town America. You can buy tickets at the door for $10 for adults and $5 for students. The show takes place on this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday evenings at 7:30 PM and a Sunday matinee on November 24th at 2:00 PM. Pendale's Harassment and Bullying Intervention Task Force held a Students vs. Staff Basketball Game as the culmination of their three-week fundraising efforts for the North Penn Educational Foundation. The Habit Team raised close to $1,600 which will go directly back to enrich Pendale's curriculum. Renowned author and illustrator Peter Catalonato visited the 4th graders at Oak Park Elementary School. He talked to students about the process of writing a book or a story. He also gave the students an illustration demonstration on how to easily create a character. And finally, 75 students converged on Penfield Middle School for the annual Buxmont Honors Chorus Concert. These select students from Sauterton, North Penn, and Methacton sang seven selections to an appreciative audience. If you missed their performance, you can check it out and all of our other programming on our YouTube channel at youtube.com/NPTV. That is all for this North Penn News Update. I'm Melissa Cubitt. Have a great day.
Welcome to our regularly-scheduled action meeting. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the Board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the Board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the Board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the Audience of Citizens logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the Board, the Board President may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. And now, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we do start out our action meetings at a time when we get a chance to recognize accomplishments for the North Penn School District, Dr. Dietrich.
Thank you, Mr. Shipinski. This evening is our pleasure to recognize North Penn High School students for their accomplishments in the National Merit Scholarship Competition and presenting the names of those students. Judy Turner, High School Assistant Principal.
Tonight, we are here to welcome students selected by the National Merit Scholarship Program based on their ability to show exceptional academic talent and their potential for success in rigorous college studies. Last year, 1.5 million students took the PSAT qualifying exam in October. 16,000 are named semifinalists throughout our country, representing less than 1% of all high school seniors in the country. These academically talented high school seniors will now have an opportunity to continue in the competition for more than 8,000 available National Merit Scholarships worth more than $35 million. North Penn High School has nine National Merit semifinalists. Here are the semifinalists that are with us tonight. Stacy Chang.
Congratulations.
Samuel Curly.
Min Kim.
Andreas Kraus.
Monisha Ravi.
Ryan Reynolds.
are recognized as commended students by National Merit Scholarship Program for their exceptional academic promise. These students placed among the top 5% of more than the 1.5 million students who entered the 2014 competition. Tonight, I will be introducing them along with Mr. Peter Nicholson, Assistant Principal at the high school. Matthew Chaffey.
Beatrice Shea.
Jo-Juan Kim.
Amanda Kloth.
Ash Krishnan.
Lauren Lee.
Colin Lynch.
Wonderful stuff. Y'all should be happy just congratulations, sir. Well done for yourself. Just wonderful.
Reese Mauer.
Gregory Niedlinger.
Vinay Saja.
Natalia Sanson Diaz, also recipient of the National Hispanic Recognition Program Scholar.
And Eric Joe.
Guys, this is a time for the full Board and the Administration to congratulate each and every one of you. Would you please come forward? And Judy, would you guys come back too?
Sure.
Congratulations.
One more round of applause, please.
The School Board would be proud to announce that this is gonna be on Comcast, Channel 28, and Fios, Channel 29 tomorrow night at 7:30, Monday at 12:30 and 7:30, Tuesday at 12:30 and 7:30, and again at Wednesday at 12:30. So you get the chance to watch it again live.
Mr. President, since 1983, the Pennsylvania School Boards Association has been honoring long-term school directors for their volunteer service to their local communities. School Board members are recognized when they reach eight years, 12 years, 16, 20, 24, 28, 32, 36, or 40 years of service on the School Board. And we are pleased this evening to have certificates for three Board members who have reached milestones. And the first Board member is at 12 years of service and reads honor roll of School Board service. The Board of Directors of the Pennsylvania School Boards Association proudly presents this certificate of appreciation to School Director Timothy S. Kerr, North Penn School District, for 12 years of service in recognition of unique role of School Board service and long-term contributions of individuals who bring their energy, talent, and values to the guidance of youth and public education in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Tim?
This one reads honor roll, School Board service. The Board of Directors of the Pennsylvania School Boards Association proudly presents this certificate of appreciation to School Director Frank O'Donnell, North Penn School District, for 16 years of service in recognition of the unique role of School Board service and the long-term contributions of individuals who bring their energy, talent, and values to the guidance of youth and public education in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Congratulations, Frank.
And this one reads honor roll of School Board service. The Board of Directors of the Pennsylvania School Boards Association proudly presents this certificate of appreciation to School Director Frank O'Donnell, North Penn School District, for 16 years of service in recognition of the unique role of School Board service and the long-term contributions of individuals who bring their energy, talent, and values to the guidance of youth and public education in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Congratulations, Frank.
And this one reads honor roll of School Board service. The Board of Directors of the Pennsylvania School Boards Association proudly presents this certificate of appreciation to School Director Vincent Shipinski, North Penn School District, for 16 years of service in recognition of the unique role of School Board service and the long-term contributions of individuals who bring their energy, talent, and values to the guidance of youth and public education in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Vince?
Seems like yesterday, doesn't it?
Well, speaking of seems like yesterday, we have one Board member who is concluding four years of service, and it seems like yesterday when he started, time flies. But we appreciate so much the service of Joe Sullivan. And we do have a plaque that reads, "Presented to Joseph Sullivan, North Penn School District, Board of School Directors, 2009 to 2013, in recognition of your service, dedication, and support of the North Penn School District, its students, staff, and community. Dream big, achieve greatness." Congratulations, Joe.
I want everybody to know, he had hair when he started on this show.
Thank you.
An honor of your service, Joe. Thank you very much.
Oh, Joe, don't go away. We're gonna all shake your hand. No way.
Have fun, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
I will. You can open it up if you want.
Way to go.
A lot of big wings tonight.
So much for decorum.
So we have a spectator.
That is phenomenal. That is phenomenal. Well, let's move forward, and then one of our other business, we can finalize our comments. You wanna do it now? All right. All right, we're gonna move forward with our agenda. Right now is the time for Audiences, Citizens, anybody wishing to speak to the Board, feel free to step forward and state your name and address for the record. Not a problem. I wanna recommend approval of the minutes of the 1013th action meeting held on October 17th as circulated.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. O'Donnell.
Comments or questions about the minutes? All those in favor? Opposed? Approved. Committee reports. Let's start with Support Services. Mr. Schilling.
Thank you, Mr. Shipinski. The Support Service Committee met on Monday, October 28th to discuss the following. The North Wells Elementary School additions and renovation project is now closed out. All contractors have satisfied their obligations, and final payment has been dispersed or will be approved for dispersals this evening. Also, England Elementary School addition renovations are substantially complete. Punch list work has been or still being completed for all prime contracts. Next, the committee also discussed the near-final design of the Hatfield Elementary School additions and renovations following a presentation of the design by the architect. Conditional approval, excuse me, has been granted by the Hatfield Township Planning Commission, and the committee asked that the presentation be placed on November 12th work session agenda for the full school Board de View. Also, the Administration reported on status of the North Penn High School camera upgrade and securing fencing project as well as the North Penn High School ESC energy projects. Administration gave an update also on energy efficiency. Our next meeting of the Support Service Committee was scheduled for this Monday, November 25th at 6:00 PM here at the Educational Service Center. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Any questions of Support Services this evening? All right, education, community, and policy? Mrs. Leonard?
Thank you, Mr. Shipinski. The ECP Committee met on Monday, November 11th. Changes to the middle school program of studies for the 2014-15 school year were presented to the committee. The areas of math and literacy were the focus of these changes resulting in a tiered program of core instruction and intervention developed to meet the needs of students in reading and math. In addition, there is also a new section of the middle school program of studies on the Keystone Exam in which the Keystone Exams and Chapter 4 graduation requirements are delineated. Also, the district's current demographic data was shared. Total district K through 12 enrollment now exceeds last year's total by 150 students. A large number of students enrolled during July and August, many of whom are new to the district versus having transferred to the district schools from private schools. Our schools' population are becoming more diverse. In addition, there is an increase in economically disadvantaged students and ESL students. The committee also discussed Administrative Regulation Number 6119, which addresses the district's position regarding religious and cultural holidays and celebrations. Community members also expressed their opinions on this topic during the meeting. Concerns were raised regarding the supervision of activities, the ability of students to attend activities after school hours, and the discretion of the principal to authorize holiday-related activities. As a result of the discussion, the Administration amended the regulation to allow school-wide parades and holiday shops during the school day provided that the events do not exceed 45 minutes in length. The next ECP Committee meeting will be Monday, January 13th at 6:30 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of education, community, and policy?
Just a comment. I'm glad the policy was amended, but for the people looking tonight, I got out to several of the events, and I just wanna give recognition to the one school, Gwindor, that I was at that Friday night. They had a Halloween dance. I would swear every parent was there. It was great to see the parents. Every kid was there. I mean, okay, the sex department, that was full. A lady named Dottie from the home, the Vice President of Home School came up. We talked for a while. They did a great job. I encouraged the school to have something in the evening where, to me, was I saw a family event, a family affair, where everybody got together, where it wasn't just limited to one or two parents, or mostly one parent during the daytime. I think some schools are still talking about, one lady in your meeting talked about school shops where the kids make something. So I, this is my own personal point of view. I would like the principals to encourage the shops and the Halloween dance at night, which was absolutely just fantastic. I really commend Dottie. I don't know your last name, but Dottie, if you're watching, congratulations. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. Anybody else?
Well, I guess the only thing is, if I had known Kerr had the ability to go in there, swoop in there and save the day, you know, you should've done that earlier, I guess.
Well, we're trying to work with the community and the Board and the will of, you know, all there. The Administrative Regulation, I do have that latitude to make those changes as we well know.
I appreciate it.
But yeah, there's certainly lessons learned through all this.
We had a good meeting. People exchanged information.
It was good. It was a great meeting. A great meeting. Yeah. Any other comments?
North Penn Educational Foundation, Mrs. Murphy?
Thank you. The Foundation received a record number of grant applications for its mid-year review. Nearly $27,000 worth of innovative project requests will be reviewed by the Foundation trustees next week. These projects are in addition to the nearly $18,000 worth of grants already approved for the school year. I want to thank all of the educators who took time to complete the grant application. Unfortunately, we will not be able to fund all of the requests, but do appreciate the time and effort put into formulating the projects. This is wonderful because this means the Foundation's working, that we have all these people applying is really just, you know, exactly what we want, so we're thankful. The Board of Trustees unanimously elected a new member, Tamara Kneko, a York Avenue Elementary School parent who is our newest trustee. Tammy is a member of the Chamber of Commerce Young Professionals Group and is an account executive with Altech Business Systems in Telford. The Foundation is finalizing its first-ever electronic newsletter and end-of-the-year fundraising campaign. We hope that you will consider donating to the Foundation as this tax year ends. And in other fundraising news, I'm very pleased to tell you about the efforts of Pendale Middle School students who, through very hard work, presented the Foundation with $1,545 this month. This group of students on the Habit Team organized three weeks of fundraising activities culminating in a staff versus students basketball game with the purpose of funding special education programs in their school. The entire Pendale student body and staff is to be commended for their support of these students and the Foundation. And they, at our meeting this last week, they gave a wonderful report, and I think Dr. Dietrich will agree. I mean, obviously, he was the star of the basketball game, but there were six, there were six wonderful young people who talked about everything they had done, but what, most importantly, what they're going to do. They have a plan to help students in the elementary school who need friends, who need help, who need bolstering, and their love and their enthusiasm. I mean, if we could have every program in this district working as well as this one seems to be, it's wonderful. I just have to add that. You had to be there, but it was really very, very, you know, it made everyone feel wonderful about the Foundation, about Habit, and about what they're going to be doing. And I hope other junior highs will do the same. I'd like to personally thank friends and family members who donated to the Foundation in the name of my late husband, Paul Murphy. Nearly $3,000 has been raised to fund science-related projects. I'd like to encourage those who, in times of grief, are looking for a memorial fund for a loved one to consider the Foundation. I hope that people will think about it, you know, during these times. Our next event is our charity luncheon, which will be held Saturday, February 22nd at Molly Maguire's in Lansdale. Just $25 gets you a delicious all-you-can-eat sampling of their delicious food. Tickets will be available in January and make a great holiday gift or stocking stuffer. I hope to see you all there. Speaking of the holidays, parents are reminded of the staff tribute program through the Foundation. Online, you can form, put in a form to honor anyone on the North Penn School District staff that are important in your child's life. The monetary donation goes directly to the Foundation, and our staff members receive recognition for your generosity. Madeline Bergman also updated the Foundation on the work of the MPSD Alumni Association, which is now a committee of the Foundation. The Association held a successful homecoming picnic and has planned upcoming events, including participation in the Mardi Gras Parade this weekend, and social surrounding and PHS Winter Concert, and an upcoming basketball game. Any questions about the Foundation can be directed to Christine Libarowski at the ESC. I'd like to thank Maddie Persley, who's sitting here, all that she has done to help, you know, encourage the Alumni Association here. It's growing and growing, and we appreciate it. And I have to say, please come to the craft show this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for North Penn Educational Foundation tonight? Finance, Mr. Sullivan?
Hello. We met Thursday, November 21st. Along with the normal informational items, we, Mr. Schach reviewed and highlighted a possible estimate of a $3 million favorable budget outcome by the end of the year, and some of the reasons for that will be explained later in the report. But, well, here we are. Property tax increases made up for, in September, made up for a slow August. Salary is currently estimated about $381,000 favorable compared to what we had budgeted. Real estate transfer taxes are up 31% for the first remotes compared to last year. So I'm heading out, and things are heading in the right direction. I think that's perfect. It's the first time that we've had such good news on the Finance Committee since I've been, been on the Board. So things are heading in the right direction financially, which is a great, great to hear. We moved some things to the work session tonight, the independent contractor for grant writing. We moved the action meeting tonight, and I recommend approval, and implementation of benchmarking system. We also moved to the agenda tonight, and I also recommend approval for that. End of report. Our next meeting is Monday, November 25th.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions for Finance this evening? Safe Schools, Mr. O'Donnell?
Thank you, Vince. Safe Schools Committee has not met since the last Board meeting. Our next meeting will follow, scheduled for this coming Monday, November 25th, following the Finance Meeting at 6:30 at the ESC. Just before I close, I just wanna say that now that the 72 cameras are up and running at the high school, Dr. Dietrich and I happened to be there last week, and we got, it just happened to be, the app tech company was there, Ray Wilson was there, a lot of people were there as they were fine-tuning the cameras, and I'm telling you, they're sharp. It's high-definition quality shots, pictures. I'm gonna say something kinda funny. If you have a pimple on your nose, they're gonna get it. I mean, really, these cameras are sharp. While we're there, we happen to see something, and they're catching all, these are, it's money well-spent. These are really great cameras, and the software is just fantastic. So now we're moving on to the other schools to make sure we have the same kind of quality. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. Any questions to Safe Schools this evening? Personnel. Mr. Kerr?
Personnel Committee met in Executive Session, November 12th, 2013, from 5:00 to 6:00 PM to discuss matters of personnel negotiations and potential litigation. End of report.
Thank you, Tim. The North Monco Technical Career Center report, who's gonna give that tonight? Mr. Sullivan?
We met Monday, November 18th. It was a pretty brief meeting. We didn't have a lot to discuss, but we did receive the annual audit report, and we had an unqualified opinion on that. There was a report from the superintendent that, the executive director, I guess is what he is, right? They had, they held an open house for interested students, those students that are interested in attending the tech school. And the report was that that was the most successful open house they've had in recent memory. There was hundreds of students and parents there, and it appears that interest in tech school is on the rise. They're also increasing their efforts to recruit for the machine and manufacturing program. Apparently, there's businesses that, you know, have a demand to hire qualified machinists in manufacturing, skilled manufacturing personnel, so they're actually helping with finance some of the recruitment efforts to draw people into the program. And the executive director of the school, Mr. Lucas, received an award from the county as Educator of the Year, which is really a high honor for a tech school administrator, or any administrator, I would imagine, but especially for a tech school administrator. And it was announced that there was an articulation agreement between the Montgomery County Community College Culinary Arts Program that just opened up on 40-Foot Road and the tech school, and that agreement allows students that graduate from the program to earn as many as 12 college credits into the Montgomery County Community College Culinary Arts Program. And those credits will also transfer onto a four-year program if they attend an in-state school. That's a state-
budget outcome by the end of the year. And some of the reasons for that will be explained later in the report. But, well, here we are. Property tax increases made up for, in September made up for a slow August. Salary is currently estimated about $381,000 favorable compared to what we had budgeted. Real estate transfer taxes are up 31% for first remotes as compared to last year. So, I'm heading out, and things are heading in the right direction. I think that's perfect. It's the first time that we've had such good news on the finance committee since I've been on the board. So, things are heading in the right direction financially, which is a great, great to hear. We moved some things to the work session tonight, the independent contractor for grant writing. We moved the action meeting tonight, and I recommend approval, and implementation of benchmarking system. We also moved to the agenda tonight, and I also recommend approval for that. End of report. Our next meeting is Monday, November 25th.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions for finance this evening? Safe Schools, Mr. O'Donnell.
Thank you, Vince. Safe Schools Committee has not met since the last board meeting. Our next meeting will follow, scheduled for this coming Monday, November 25th, following the finance meeting at 6:30 at the ESC. Just before I close, I just want to say that now that the 72 cameras are up and running at the high school, Dr. Dietrich and I happened to be there last week, and we got, it just happened to be, the app tech company was there, Ray Wilson was there, a lot of people were there as they were fine tuning the cameras. And I'm telling you, they're sharp. It's high-definition quality shots, pictures. I'm going to say something kind of funny. If you have a pimple on your nose, they're going to get it. I mean, really, these cameras are sharp. While we were there, we happened to see something, and they're catching all the, these are, it's money well-spent. These are really great cameras, and the software is just fantastic. So, now we're moving on to the other schools to make sure we have the same kind of quality. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. Any questions to Safe Schools this evening? Personnel. Mr. Kerr.
Personnel Committee met in executive session November 12th, 2013, from 5:00 to 6:00 PM to discuss matters of personnel negotiations and potential litigation. End of report.
Thank you, Tim. The North Monco Technical Career Center report, who's going to give that tonight? Mr. Sullivan.
We met Monday, November 18th. It was a pretty brief meeting. We didn't have a lot to discuss, but we did receive the annual audit report, and we had an unqualified opinion on that. There was a report from the superintendent that, or the executive director, I guess, is what he is, right? They had, they held an open house for interested students, those students that are interested in attending the tech school. And the report was that that was the most successful open house they've had in recent memory. There was hundreds of students and parents there, and it appears that interest in tech school is on the rise. They're also increasing their efforts to recruit for the machine and manufacturing program. Apparently, there's businesses that, you know, have a demand to hire qualified machinists in manufacturing, skilled manufacturing personnel. So, they're actually helping with finance some of the recruitment efforts to draw people into the program. And the executive director of the school, Mr. Lucas, received an award from the county as educator of the year, which is really a high honor for a tech school administrator, or any administrator, I would imagine, but especially for a tech school administrator. And it was announced that there was an articulation agreement between the Montgomery County Community College Culinary Arts Program that just opened up on 40-Foot Road and the tech school. And that agreement allows students that graduate from the program to earn as many as 12 college credits into the Montgomery County Community College Culinary Arts Program. And those credits will also transfer onto a four-year program if they attend an in-state school. That's a statewide agreement for higher institutions of higher learning. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Joe.
Just wait. Just wait until we sponsor the cook-off between the culinary school, you know, Community College and the VOTech. And we'll, we're going to be, I'm going to be pushing that. So, that'll be, hopefully, we'll set that up, and we'll compete with those college chefs.
Start with the chili cook-off, and I'll be there.
All right. Well, I think you'll be, yeah, you'll be one of the judges.
Yeah, I'd like to attend the chili cook-off.
The other thing we did at the meeting for the first time since I've been on any board was we actually had an individual call-in, because occasionally, as we know, you know, life gets in the way of school board meetings, and it worked. I mean, we couldn't see him. He was on that little device, sitting on, you know, on the table, but he stayed with us the whole time and participated, and I think it's something we need to think about in the future.
Yeah, he called in from next door. I think it was California.
Is that right?
He was on the West Coast. Called in for the meeting, so that was nice.
Didn't I?
Same solicitor.
Yes.
That's why.
It works.
Yeah, it does. It does.
Excellent. Thank you for your report, Joe. Montgomery County Intermediate Unit, Mrs. Murphy.
The Montgomery County Intermediate Unit Board met on Wednesday evening, November 20th. The operating budget for 2014-2015 was approved. Lois Robinson gave a detailed account of the special ed budget. The IU continues to work on cutting costs and learn to pass those savings on to each individual district. Stan Whistler, our chief financial officer's contract was renewed for five more years. People did that with applause, obviously, because he does a really good job there. Legislatively, Congress passed the EPIM bill, and the Senate passed HRO 83, which mandates that districts complete background checks for all employees. And I think we've always, I don't know why, but this just evidently must be, you know, for the whole state. This is federal. They must do this in order to receive ESEA funds. So, finally, it's been, you know, actually passed, but we have done this here for a long time. Paraeducator training on November 5th, MCIU offered professional development opportunities to over 400 paraeducators from MCIU, Abington, Colonial, Lower Marion, and North Penn School Districts. MCIU consultants facilitated workshops that addressed autism, behavior, inclusion, reading math, traumatic brain injury, and transition. The workshops were held in the North Penn and Lower Marion School Districts. The IU is putting out Did You Know? every month. This is a brief synopsis of what we do, and it's really nice, because it's just, you can see in a hurry. More than 100 administrators and teachers from 14 school districts attended two sessions of MCIU-sponsored technology symposium this last month. MCIU opened two new classrooms this year to serve students with multiple disabilities, including a preschool class at Belmont School in Upper Marion Township. Dawn Grant, an MCIU shelter tutor since 2002, was selected as a 2013 Education for Children and Youth Experiencing Homelessness Advocate of the Year. The MCIU facilitated a three-day Eastern Pennsylvania Special Ed workshop, and finally, the sixth annual MCIU Education Foundation netted over $9,000. The big news was last night is that Dr. Shively, the, I say the CEO or the managing director of the IU, announced his retirement as of June 2014. He looks forward to moving back to Oregon to be with his family. December 4th to 9th is the National IU Convention in San Antonio, and this will be really nice for, to go, I'm going to be going as a representative, one of the representatives. So, I'm looking forward to that and what I can learn to bring back to North Penn. Respectfully submitted, Carolyn Murphy.
Thank you, Carolyn. Any questions, Montgomery County IU?
Boudreaux's on the River Walk is a good restaurant.
In San Antonio?
It's kind of an interesting place.
The Alamo is what, 25 feet by 25 feet?
Right there. But you know what? The Alamo is, you know, there's not a whole lot there when you go in. It just doesn't.
It's just surrounded by, like, city towns.
It is.
Yeah, it is.
It is. But it's just.
But the River Walk is beautiful.
Well, I'm a Davey Crockett person, you know. So, I'm really excited.
Yeah.
A couple of years ago, I went with the FBLA. It's phenomenal. Really is.
It's a nice town.
All right. Let's move forward with our superintendent report tonight. Dr. Dietrich.
Thank you, Mr. President. I recommend approval of an expulsion of student 1121131, whose name is on file in the office of the superintendent. The student and parents waived their right to an expulsion hearing.
So moved. Motion by Mr. O'Donnell.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I recommend approval of settlement agreements for students 1121132 and 1121133, whose names are on file in the office of the superintendent.
So moved. Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. O'Donnell. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I recommend approval of changes to the program of studies for grades seven and eight for the 2014-15 academic year per item 66, 13A through E.
Motion by Mrs. Murphy, second by Mr. Schilling. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of changes to the program of studies for grades nine through 12 for the 2014-15 academic year per item 67, 13A through G.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mrs. Murphy. Comments or questions? This will make our program of studies even stronger.
It will.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend acceptance of the gifts to the district as listed.
So moved. Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. Sullivan. An extensive list. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks to everybody.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Gifts accepted. Thank you.
I recommend approval of bids per item BA4, A through C, as listed.
So moved. Motion by Mr. O'Donnell.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bids are approved.
I recommend the approval of personnel items as listed, A through D.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. O'Donnell. Comments or questions?
Just note, I appreciate that we have a pretty good administrative staff here that we can, they can pinch-hit for us at times. Like, Mr. Carlin stepping in to take over Nap, and, you know, Mr. Mazza. Very nice article in the paper today about, you know, his talent. So, we appreciate that.
The ability to be dual-hatted in this time.
Yeah. I was talking to Bill, Mr. Carlin, a couple of days ago. He said he's really, really looking forward to going over there.
Yeah. Any other comments? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved.
I recommend approval of student travel per item BA8.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Murphy, second by Mr. Sullivan. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Student travels approved.
Recommend approval of contracts per item BA9, A through C, copies of which are on file in the office of Business Administration.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. O'Donnell. Comments or questions?
Yes, comment. On the grant writer, I think, I just want to make sure the rule still holds. I think the school district looked at something like this maybe eight, 10, 12 years ago. I'm not sure. And I think, Vince, I think you found out at that time that any money, any grant money received cannot pay for the salary. Is that still held? Is that a state or?
No, it depended on the grant specifically. A lot of times, they had written into the grant that you weren't allowed to pay only a certain portion of administrative fees or costs of the grant.
Okay, so it has to be in.
Usually, it was 1% or 2%. So, it was kind of limited to what we applied to.
Okay, so it has to be written in there.
It's usually part of the grant application process.
Right, and not all grants allow you to charge administrative costs. It depends on the exact grant that you're writing.
I knew there was something to that effect a long time ago.
Yeah, because a couple of the earlier grants that we did pursue would not allow you to charge anything back for the administrative fees, which, as you know, getting the grants a great award, but at the same time, the implementation of the grant may cost us half of the value of the grant. So, it didn't really work out well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments about contracts tonight? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Contracts are approved.
Recommend approval of alternative placements per item BA10, copies of which are on file in the office of the Director of Special Education.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved.
The vandalism report is included for your information. This concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Dietrich. Let's move forward with our finance report. Mr. Schock.
Yes, this is the finance report for the month of October 2013. Cash receipts for the month of October totaled $11,857,178.88. Cash dispersments for October totaled $17,522,662.79, leaving total funds available of $160,549,550.3. End of report.
Want to keep moving forward, Bob?
Sure. I recommend approval of dispersments to be sanctioned for the month of October 2013 in the amount of $17,152,212.46. And dispersments to be approved for the month of November 2013 in the amount of $2,757,133.37.
I need a motion. Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved dispersments. Want to move forward?
Okay, I recommend approval of the resolution regarding the review and processing of monthly statements submitted by the local tax collectors per item BA12.
So moved. Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, second by Mr. Sullivan. Comments or questions?
Just want to make sure that, have all the tax collectors, have they, do we know if all the tax collectors have been informed? I know.
Yes, I did it myself.
Yes, they have been.
So, they're all there now.
Right.
And I think they were also sent letters from the district.
Correct. And it's been going on for several months. They've been aware of it.
Look, you just want to make sure. All right, thank you.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Federal, state grants and other programs, Dr. Holden.
There's no report tonight. Thank you.
All right, we're going to move forward with other business. Before we do talk about other business, I would like to make comments to Mr. Sullivan's service. So, after this motion, we're going to do that, if you don't mind. And there is no crying in school board.
Yes.
All right. Under other business, recommend, yeah, really, recommend approval of the employment contract with Stephen B. Sirocky as Director of Business Administration effective February 22nd, 2014 through June 30th, 2018. Copy of the contract is on file with the District Office of School and Community Engagement. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. O'Donnell. Comments or questions?
Mr., Vince, if I may, just say a couple of words quickly of introduction for Mr. Scrocky, and then we can certainly hear comments.
It is Scrocky?
Scrocky.
Sirocky?
Is that what I said? Did I say that one? It's Scrocky.
Scrocky.
S-K-R-O.
I am very pleased to be able to present Mr. Scrockety as a candidate for the position of Director of Business Administration to replace Mr. Schock, as Mr. Schock has announced his retirement effective the end of our fiscal year. Mr. Scrocky is presently serving as the Assistant to the Superintendent for the Business Administration in Upper Marion School District. He was a Chief Financial Officer at the Penn Manor School District. He has more than 20 years of experience as a school business administrator. That wealth of experience is in all aspects of business administration and operations, namely budgeting and purchasing, contract negotiations, investments, construction projects, food service, child accounting, transportation, maintenance, and personnel. He had exceptionally strong evaluations from his present and previous employers and supervisors. We're just thrilled to be able to present him to the board for consideration this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Dietrich. It's nice to our, you want to add something to?
Well, so much so, apparently, that your friend, the superintendent of Upper Marion, is no longer speaking with you, right?
We're working to get that resolved right now.
That's the ultimate recommendation, isn't it?
Before we call the vote, I want the public to know that the board didn't meet an executive session tonight, November 21st, 2013, from 7:00 to 7:30 PM to discuss matters of personnel, potential litigation, and negotiations. Not yet. I just wanted to make sure the public had the notice of the full board meeting earlier. All right, I have a motion and a second for this employment agreement. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President, Mr. Scrocky could not be here this evening. He is already engaged in collective bargaining at his present employer for some contracts that he is working on, on behalf of the school district. We did ask that I read this statement from him. It says, "Thank you for expressing confidence in me to serve as the Director of Business Administration for the North Penn School District. I am both honored and humbled to be joining a premier school district with such an outstanding reputation. It is with great enthusiasm. I look forward to starting my position and working with the board, administration, staff, and community. Once again, thank you for this opportunity." Steve Scrocky.
Good.
I'll note it.
Started off on the right foot there. Just like that.
All right, I have a motion and a second, and we approve it. So, I would like to bring comment to, towards Mr. Sullivan. And I'd like to start that with saying, first off, Joe, I'd like to say, from a personal standpoint, I consider you my friend, and I will continue to do that, because we have served humbly together. We've been in the trenches together. We've taken hits. We've done a lot of things together. Negotiations was one of the things we did together. I appreciate your steward of the public fix. I also think that you're one of the finest gentlemen I've ever served with on the board. And you are one of them. And if anybody likes to add comments to Joe's service.
Yeah, I just want to say I appreciate your service on the board. I'll miss your TV shows. I thought you did a great, no, really, you did a great job with them. I don't usually watch, I mean, a whole lot, because I'm doing other things, but I did watch many of them, and you did a good job. I thought they were well-done. And I wish you the best, and thanks for your service.
Thank you.
I, the public should know that there's a silly law called the Hatch Act. I'm sorry, the feds may not like that, but the Hatch Act is the reason that Joe can no longer serve the community. And all that act says is that because he is employed by the federal government, he's not permitted to be a member of a party, and a partisan party. And, you know, it's absurd. It's an absurd thing that keeps someone who wants to dedicate and work for the community. There's been talk about getting that thing changed, but it, you know, anything happening in Congress, you know, is a joke anymore. But folks should know that. Joe really did want to continue to do this, and we certainly, you know, love to keep him on board. And because of that, he's unable to run. And it's, you know, it bothers me. And clearly, everything Vince said and John said, I did. We'll miss it. So, thank you.
Mrs. Murphy.
I want to thank Joe when I first came on the board two years ago. You were very kind in many ways and helpful, so thank you.
Any ministers want to join this crowd? I know you had a couple of comments.
Well, I certainly do appreciate board service. I think many know in the community that I served as school board in the community where I grew up for 16 years. I know what's involved with being a school director. And many times, it is a job where you don't get a whole lot of outward thanks, but you know you have the appreciation when you provide service to your community, from the community and from the school district's administration, teachers, full administrators, support staff, all that know that this is, the job is service without compensation. But when you have an individual like Joe Sullivan who's willing to dedicate his time and efforts to the betterment of our school district, it is very appreciated. He always done it as a gentleman also, and I appreciate that very much. So, thank you very much for your service, Joe. Thank you very much.
And I would just want to add, you know, echo what Dr. Dietrich expressed, and also say that I really appreciate your commitment to the students in the district and your commitment to providing them with the best educational opportunities that we can. So, thank you very much for your interest in the lives and the future plans of our students.
Thank you very much.
Very well said.
I feel like I just sat in on my own obituary or eulogy here.
Appetite.
Appetite, yeah.
[laughing]
But, yeah, it was really nice. And thank you for the kind words. It was, serving on the board is one of the highlights of my life. And I, as Mr. Kerr said, if I could, I would serve further, but I can't at this time. So, yeah, thanks again for the opportunity. And there, I mean, there's very few times where you get to be associated with an organization the caliber of North Penn School District and the administration that, the caliber of this administration, and the board, the caliber of this board. So, I feel like I was the one given the gift, not that I gave it. And thank you very much.
I'd like to add, I do this occasionally. I'd like to make a motion before this meeting is over. I'd like to make a motion to extend to Mr. Sullivan all the rights and the privileges that we, that we get as board members. For example, where you get the tickets to the football games and the plays at the high school and...